As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As all members have received a copy of the call of our May meeting, the reading of those proposed minutes will be omitted. We do have corrections to the minutes. Warren Stern of District 11 was present and we will amend the minutes to reflect that Mr. Stern was in attendance. Are there any other proposed changes to our minutes of the May 11 meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Stephen Warzawa, District 9.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow RTM members, town officials, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all tonight. As a member of the Greenwich Independence Day Celebration Committee, I would like to take this time to formally invite all of our RTM members to the annual Fourth of July Independence Day Celebration that will be held at Town Hall beginning at 9:00 a.m. You shall have an invitation flyer that was given to the district chairs. This uniquely Greenwich celebration of our nation's founding will take on an even more special meaning as we celebrate the 375th anniversary of Greenwich's founding. Please join us for this wonderful tribute as we raise the first American flag and honor our citizens who helped found this nation and our town, fought and died in the Revolutionary War, and we will also be honoring our young good citizens from each of our public and private schools with the Good Citizens Award for all of the community service and good works that they do on our community's behalf. Again, we hope you join us. It's always a wonderful celebration. We invite you all to like us on Facebook, which is, if you go to Facebook, it's Annual Independence Day Celebration-Grenwich, Connecticut. Again, we look forward to seeing you all at a wonderful Independence Day Celebration, and we always have wonderful refreshments afterwards, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who has to be identified, recognized at this point? All right. I did notify our committee and district chairs that based upon the reports received, I would be recommending the following organization of our call tonight. I will shortly designate for the consent calendar items 1 through 4, 7, and 11. I will recommend that we combine items 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13 for voting purposes, which would leave to consider separately items 14 through 18. So at this point, I will now designate the following items for our consent calendar. If those items remain on our consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports and no discussion on them. All right. The first consent calendar item is item number one. That is the appointment of John Morgenau to be a regular member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item two is the appointment of Hans Christian Tallheim to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item three is the appointment of Patrick Sline to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item four is the appointment of Richard Lowe to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item seven is the approval of the applications filed in the clerk's office under the Neighborhood Assistance Program, and that is for encouraging business contributions to nonprofit organizations and government agencies providing services in Greenwich. Item 11 is the appointment of the following five individuals to be regular members of the New Lebanon Elementary School Building Committee. Those individuals are Dean Goss, Patricia Kantorski, Alan Bryan Harris Jr., Claire Kilgallen, and Stephen Walco. So those are the six items that I have now designated for our consent calendar. Is there any objection to the placement of any of those items on our consent calendar? All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting? I'm sorry. Arlene Lamazo? All right. You may speak for three minutes. You're objecting to item 11 being designated for consent, and if you have, I believe it's 20 persons in support, then it will not go on our consent calendar.
Do you have three minutes? Why do you want to take it off?
Because I wanted to add something to it that was not part of your description there.
Item 11 is the appointment of five individuals to the New Lebanon Elementary School Building Committee. That's the item.
Right.
There's no discussion on that.
We're adding one to that, as you know.
No. No, 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 no. No, we're not.
You said I had to speak to it, but I don't know if you don't want me to.
Under the charter, there is an RTM representative ex officio to this building committee. That is not an appointment that the RTM makes. That is an appointment that you, as Chair of Public Works Committee, makes without need for further action. Okay? All right. Is there any objection to the designation of those six items? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items 1 through 4, 7, and 11, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right. Based on the reports received, it was a consensus to combine for voting purposes items 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of combining those items? It has been moved and seconded to combine, to suspend the rules, to combine items 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining items 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
That motion has carried. So that will leave to consider separately items 14 through 18. So we will now take up the combined calendar items in numerical order. Item 5 is the first of those items. Candace Garthwaite with that resolution. I'm sorry. Yes, this was postponed from our April meeting, so it is now currently before us. This is a resolution to appoint Richard Maitland to be a regular member of Planning and Zoning for a term expiring March 31, 2018. So we will now take the reports, beginning with our Appointments Committee and its Chair, Candace Garthwaite.
Good evening. The Appointments Committee met with Mr. Maitland on April 14. All districts were represented. Mr. Maitland has served on Planning and Zoning since 2000. He is an architect with a strong commitment to carefully reviewing applications that come before the commission, and he has a nearly perfect attendance record. Mr. Maitland expressed his commitment to the plan of conservation and development. In the audience was Michael Warner, and he questioned Mr. Maitland on his yes vote for the Lexus Project. Mr. Maitland expressed that he felt the application should go to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals and that this was the correct process for car dealerships, and that was the reason for his yes vote. Our vote was 11-1-0. District 1 commented that District 1 is upset over some of the development carrying on in his district on Millbank Avenue in particular.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. We saw Richard Maitland back in April. When asked why he agreed to serve for so long a period, given the arduous requirements of being a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Mr. Maitland emphasized that he strongly believed in giving back on specific issues raised by the committee members, particularly regarding special permits for businesses such as automobile dealerships. Mr. Maitland noted that planning and zoning typically didn't vote as special exceptions for use had already been granted, specifically in the case of automobile dealerships, by the Zoning Board of Appeals. However, he noted that standards under which to judge were quite specific and had to be considered neighborhood by neighborhood. Traffic patterns were also taken into consideration. In an ideal situation, the planning and zoning decision would be preliminary, then the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals takes up special exceptions, such as auto dealerships. Then the item comes back to planning and zoning for final approval. Other questions from committee members regarded notification of neighbors affected by applications. Currently, state law requires notice only to properties directly abutting or across the street from a planned development. However, Greenwich may be allowed to expand this distance. A citizen group could propose such a change in regulation. Other questions from committee members regarded the possibility of big-box stores or smaller versions thereof being built in Greenwich. Mr. Maitland replied that such a development would need to conform with our zoning regulations, and few sites are large enough for parking. The delegate from District 1 questioned the number and size of residences being constructed on Millbank Avenue in recent years, which she said are out of character. Mr. Maitland noted that developers had purchased a number of contiguous parcels, hence they had been able to link buildings. Now, under the plan of conservation and development, such proposed developments are limited by new green space and flood control regulations. Mr. Maitland emphasized that development activities in the R6 zone, such as Millbank Avenue, were among his major concerns. Further questions regarded grade-plane decisions. Mr. Maitland admitted that he was actually haunted by this categorization. The concept of finished grade would have been more appropriate. He noted that following a principle adopted in Norwalk, the grade-plane differential concept was being reconsidered. Our vote on Mr. Maitland was 12-0-0. 12-0-0. I am done.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion on item 5. All right. Item 6 now comes before us. Again, this is a resolution postponed from our April meeting. It is the appointment of Katie Brown to be a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2020. Peter Berg with the land use report on item 6.
So Katie Brown has served as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for the past eight years. She's being nominated now as a full member. Discussion revolved around the two main forms of applications that the Historic District Commission hears. One is the modifications of homes in our historic districts, and the second is applications for buildings on Greenwich Avenue, the latter being purely advisory to planning and zoning. Katie made two points in the discussion. The preference of the Historic District Commission when considering applications on Greenwich Avenue for applicants to downplay significant corporate branding in preference for keeping the character of the streetscape. That is, when a corporate, when a store moves onto Greenwich Avenue, the Historic District Commission attempts to maintain the original character of Greenwich Avenue's streetscape and not allow them to put a facade on that looks like all of their other stores across the country. Our vote on Katie Brown was 10-0-0. Districts 1 and 7 were absent.
Thank you. Candace Garthwaite with the report of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee met with Katie Brown on May 5. All districts were represented. She is committed to preserving the character of the town of Greenwich, and there were many questions about demolitions, and she reported that, you know, the majority of demolitions occur outside of designated historic districts, and therefore the commission does not have authority over them. Our vote was 11-0-1. District 2 was not present for the discussion.
Thank you. Discussion on item 6. Item 8 now comes before us. This is the New Lebanon. Barbara O'Neil, Chair of our Board of Ed.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and RTM members. The resolution is that the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting authorizes the Greenwich Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Education and to accept or reject a grant for the New Lebanon Elementary School Project at the New Lebanon Elementary School. The second part of that is that the state resolved that the New Lebanon Elementary School Building Committee is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the New Lebanon Elementary School Project at the New Lebanon Elementary School. The third part is that it is all that the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting hereby authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specification for the New Lebanon Elementary School Project.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 8 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Stephen Mesker, Vice Chair of our Education Committee?
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. The Education Committee met on June 1 at Town Hall at 8:00 p.m. In attendance were 10 of our 12 districts. Four in 12 are absent. You've already heard the measure, so I won't, or the motion, so I won't bother you with the details there. Our vote was 10 in favor, 0 opposed, and 0 abstaining.
Thank you. Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on June 1 in the lower lounge. We had all members present. We had also with us Barbara O'Neil from the Board of Ed. This is one of these items where we have to check a few boxes to make sure that the state sends back to us some of the money that we send to them in taxes. In this case, two big items were required. One is that we establish a building committee, which we've done, and prepare some schematics. All those, as Barbara explained, were accomplished or about to be accomplished, and we voted for this item 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 8. Item 9 now comes before us. Jim Michael, Chief Engineer of the Town of Greenwich Department of Public Works.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. We have a substitute resolution due to a minor math or typographic error on the numbers. Resolved that the sum of $670,586 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the following accounts. A 312-51100, known as Highway Overtime Services, $350,000. G 318-51100, known as Highway Traffic Operations Overtime Services, $55,000. A 315-51300, known as Highway BOE Temporary Services, $40,586. And A 312-53750, known as Highway Materials, $225,000.
All right. So but for the change, adding $100 to the total to now $670,586, it is otherwise the same as appears on the call.
Correct.
All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item 9 has been moved and seconded. Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works committee met and had Jim there to help us. As well as Joe Roberto. You heard what the accounts were and the amount of the accounts. The overtime was due to the winter snow events, which was so unusual this winter. Instead of 30 inches, which is the average they estimate to be normal, we had 69 inches of snow, and they removed 25,000 yards of snow. They depleted, of course, their stockpile of sand and salt, so that now it's only at half-capacity. And these materials are kept in what they call the barn, which is visible from I-95. I think you all know where that is. We have to replenish it now so that it's at full capacity before the winter season starts. And the reason for that is, number one, we don't want to have to compete with other towns to appropriate the materials themselves, but also the pricing is better if we do it now rather than wait for the season to begin. Our vote was 11-0-0. District 2 was absent.
Thank you. Can the Chair of District 8 please come forward and with the report of the Finance Committee, its Chair, Michael Warner?
The Finance Committee met on June 1. On this item, we had with us Amy Seibert. For the reasons you just heard, we passed this item 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 9. All right. Item 10 now comes before us. Mr. Michael, once again.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Resolved that the Town of Greenwich grant a permanent utility easement and temporary construction easement on the Julian Curtis School property at the corner of Anderson Road and Elm Street, 180 East Elm Street, Greenwich, to the Aquarian Water Company of Connecticut. Be it further resolved that the First Selectman of the Town of Greenwich is hereby authorized to execute such easements on behalf of the Town of Greenwich.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took this up last Monday evening. Aquarian Water Company wants to install a replacement pump station on Julian Curtis property located near the intersection of Mallard Drive and the Anderson Road. There is an existing pump station nearby that will be abandoned once this new station is up and running. Aquarian is paying the town $310,000 in consideration of granting the easement to Aquarian. We had Town Engineer Jim Michael and Town Attorney Wayne Fox helping us with this matter. Also present were Elizabeth Cameron Schultz, the Director at Aquarian, as well as an Aquarian engineer. Mr. Michael explained this pump station represents a critical link necessary to provide water to town residents when there are power outages. We were told that neighborhood concerns have been alleviated by the agreement to provide screening for the pump station. Aquarian has also agreed to plant new trees on school property to replace those that will be cut down during construction. Board of Ed member Laura Erickson also reported that the Board of Ed had voted 7-0 with one abstention in favor of this project and the easement agreement. After a review of the easement agreement and the temporary construction easement with the town attorney, there was very little discretion, except that our District 10 member voiced an objection to providing a permanent easement on town property. A vote as to legal order and on the merits was the same. It was 11-0, with District 10 voting no in both instances. District 4 was absent.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works also took up this item. We had Jim Michael to assist us, and also Liz Camarillo and Salvatore Longo representing Aquarian. As we just heard, it was, it's an item to grant the permanent easement on JC property. The current pump station is failing. It has to have, it has to be replaced. It will be replaced by a 20-by-50-foot concrete structure below ground. You heard that they're going to have a temporary easement in order to do the work of replacing this pump station. In addition to $310,000, which you just heard they're going to pay for this easement, they will restore any paving, sidewalks, and landscape that is disrupted during the construction. Our vote was 11-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 10. Item 12 now comes before us. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed alternate member of the Claims Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15, Margaret B. G. Freiberg.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Doug, did you want to give a report on this?
The Appointments Committee met with Margaret Freiberg on May 5. All districts were represented. Margaret had done her best to recruit other attorneys serving on the RTM for the position of alternate on the Claims Committee. As it turned out, she became the candidate. You can see in the call that she is highly qualified for the role, particularly due to her 28 years as in-house legal counsel for IBM, where much of her work was in the area of employee benefits law. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Wasn't that Dick Cheney's strategy, looking for a vice president?
Yes. It has been used before.
Doug Wells with our Legislative and Rules Report.
Ms. Freiberg has served as, for a number of years, on the Legislative and Rules Committee, so she's well-known to us. She always comes to our committee meetings prepared to ask tough questions and brings unique insights to our discussions. She is a retired attorney, as you heard, worked as in-house counsel at IBM, where she tells us that she dealt, among other things, with employment discrimination claims, and she also has experience in long-term disability claims. Glenn Kaner, who's a member of our Legislative and Rules Committee, who also serves on the Claims Committee, pointed out that somewhere between 1/4 to 1/3 of the claims that the Claims Committee considers are employment-related claims, so he believes that Ms. Freiberg's experience will be helpful to the Claims Committee. Our vote on Ms. Freiberg's appointment was 11-0, with District 4 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 12. Item 13 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring 3/31/18, Natalie R. Queen.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 13 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Our committee met with Ms. Queen last Tuesday. Ms. Queen is currently an RTM member representing District 12, and she's also a member of our Health and Human Services Committee. She's been a longtime volunteer in the community. Prior to joining the RTM, she served on the Board of Education for four years. She has a, Ms. Queen stated that she had personal experience working with the Department of Social Services, which she credits with helping her get herself established after she moved back to Greenwich, where she was born and raised. She's attended Social Service Board meetings, and if appointed, she would like to make Neighborhood Assistance the focus of her work, which is a working subcommittee of the Board. It is with pleasure that the Health and Human Services Committee recommends our committee colleague to the Board of Social Services. Our vote was 10-0-0, with Districts 4 and 5 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Garthwaite with the Appointments Committee report.
The Appointments Committee met Natalie Queen on June 2, and all districts were represented. Natalie expressed Natalie expressed a need for finding a way to communicate with residents who might benefit by the services offered by the Social Services Department. This is especially true for those who are in need of career assistance and those who may have family members with mental illness. Our vote was twelve, zero, zero.
Thank you. Discussion on item thirteen. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combined calendar items five, six, eight, nine, ten, twelve, and thirteen, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on our consent calendar items. Those were items one through four, seven, and eleven. Those in favor, one seventy-six. Opposed, three. Abstaining, zero. The combined calendar, I'm sorry, the consent calendar items have carried. We will now take up individually the remaining items. The first item is item fourteen. Is someone presenting that? Candace Garthway.
We are going to make a motion to postpone this item to the September RTM meeting.
All right, so why don't you just offer it, and then I'll recognize you to offer that motion.
All right, so the Appointments Committee moves this, moves that this item be postponed to the September RTM.
Well, you're, you're presenting it, we, we need to get it before us, so this-
Oh, get it before us, okay.
This is a resolution-
Oh, sorry.
This, this is a resolution to appoint Stephen Fong as an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses One Word Agency for a term expiring March thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen. All right, is there, that has been moved? Mr. Tessie.
There was a correction. We're going to offer a substitute resolution to the term to be three thirty-one, sixteen.
Three thirty-one, sixteen. All right. Now, who is offering this? Where's this coming from?
Sorry. I jumped ahead of you.
All right.
Sorry.
So, so you are moving a substitute resolution, as I just described, but the term expiration is March thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution on item fourteen? It has been, the substitute resolution on item fourteen has been moved and seconded. Candace Garthway, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Okay, here we go again. The, the difficulty here was that Mr. Fong has, because of minority representation issues, as, for him to serve as an alternate on the Inland Wetlands and Waterways Agency, Mr. Fong agreed to change his party affiliation, which necessitates a ninety-day waiting period. Thus therein, we make a motion to move this item to the September RTM meeting.
All right, that being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to postpone item fourteen to our September meeting. All right, I will call for a voice vote, this being a procedural matter. All those in favor of postponing item fourteen to our September meeting, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion to postpone has carried. Item fifteen now comes before us. This is coming from our Appointments Committee. Candace Garthway.
Resolve that the following item shall be added to the rules of the RTM as it appears on the call.
All right, once again, offered on behalf of, by one of our committees, it does not require a second. This is a proposed rule change regarding the appointment of an ex officio member from the RTM membership to the Harbor Management Commission. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
This is a request by the Appointments Committee to establish a nominating procedure as well as imposing attendance and reporting requirements in connection with the newly-created Harbor Management Commission. This rule provides that the nomination can come only from the Appointments Committee and also requires pursuant to paragraph two of the resolution to, for the RTM member to attend, keep himself informed, and report by posting on the RTM website the activities of the Commission. Our committee noted several scrivener's errors in the resolution, which were corrected by unanimous vote of the committee members. We also made one substantive change. Our rules for all other committees and commissions allow for members to be also nominated by petition of ten RTM members or by nomination from the RTM floor. This resolution only provides for nominations from the Appointments Committee. While there did not appear to be any support for nominations by petition of the RTM members, competitive election by nominations from the RTM floor, and so we made that substantive change. The committee's motion to revise, which reflects the change, was attached to my report. Our vote as to legal order and on the merits, as revised, were both twelve, zero, and at the appropriate time, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Peter Berg with our Land Use Committee report.
So, the Land Use Committee took up item fifteen last Monday, and as you just heard, it's a resolution to include in the rules a specific timetable to appoint an RB, an RTM ex officio member to the Harbor Management Commission and to formalize its, his or her responsibilities. Candace Garthway, Chair of the Appointments Committee, presented the resolution. She noted that an RTM ex officio member of the Harbor Management Commission had always been part of the establishment of the Commission, but that formalizing the appointment process within the RTM had never been in place. Bob Brady, who was part of the team that wrote the ordinance, confirmed that the original intent was for an ex officio member to be an active member of the Harbor Management Commission and to serve fundamentally as a vehicle for timely communication with the RTM. Peter Quigley, a member of the Harbor Management Commission, noted how important it was for the RTM to be informed through this position on the policies and proposals of the Harbor Management Commission in a timely manner so that final proposals could be resolved expeditiously. Our vote on this item was ten, zero, zero. Districts one and seven were absent.
Thank you. Karen Sodikon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. Our committee took this up Tuesday night. Several committee members felt that the wording of the resolution could be better, could be clarified. They felt that the resolution should clearly state that the ex-official member is a non-voting member. The committee felt that there are two issues in the resolution. Number one, creates a mechanism for nominating and appointing an ex-official member to the Harbor Management Commission. And two, details the responsibilities of such member, of the ex-official member. So, item number one would stay the same. We'd like to offer a substitute resolution also. As to number two, the committee changed the language to the following. Under number two, in addition to such member's duties as an ex-official non-voting member of the Harbor Management Commission, such member shall also, goes to A, we've rewritten, report to the representative town meeting the Harbor Management Commission's activities as delineated by section seven A one through seven A eight of the town ordinances, as well as any salient reasoning of the committee. And B, post said reports to the representative town meeting website prior to the RTM meeting. The vote to change the language was ten, zero, zero, and the vote on the language as changed was also ten, zero, zero. I'm not sure how we want to do this, since we have two changes.
All right, you have a motion to amend?
Resil.
All right, we'll take up the Legislative and Rules Committee motion first.
Okay.
Doug Wells with the proposed amendments from the Legislative and Rules Committee.
So, looking at the resolution, the changes are as follows. The, the first one is in the fourth line of, of paragraph one, where the line starts with thereafter, as per, there, it's a seven A point one. The town code of ordinances actually has a dash in it, so the reference should be, we deleted the point, put in a dash. And then, the second change is, we remove the word charter in that line and insert it in its place, code of ordinances. So, it'll read seven A dash one of the town code of ordinances. The third change is reflective of the substantive change we made. After the, the word, the line that begins with appointed by the representative town meeting on nomination, insert the word either. And then, in the next line, after the words Appointments Committee, insert or from the RTM floor. So, that line will read, such member shall be appointed by the representative town meeting on nomination, either by the Appointments Committee or from the RTM floor. In paragraph two, there should be a comma after this, in the second line, where it says, keep informed of the Commission's plans. It should be a comma between the N and the S in-
Apostrophe, you talking about?
Apostrophe, thank you.
Thank you.
In, in sub-paragraph B, in the line beginning seven A one, after the word town and before ordinances, and again, insert in code of, so it reads town code of ordinances. And then, it says at the end of that line, reasoning of the committee, that should be reasoning of the Commission with a capital C. So, delete committee, so that it reads as well as any salient reasoning of the Commission. And then, finally, in paragraph C, in the last line, where it says to the representative town meeting, insert the word next, so it's clear that the reports have to be submitted prior to the next representative town meeting, whenever there is a, a Commission meeting. Those are the changes.
All right. So, that is the motion to amend offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee. Does not require a second and is currently before us. Is there any need to repeat those proposed changes? Okay.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Von Keiseling, please state your point of information.
Thank you. I would like, I would-
Mr. Von Keiseling, why don't you come forward?
I'm only concerned about how you proceed on this. I would like to add to the legislative and rules amendment by adding, by petition of ten.
If you are, if you are, if you are attempting to amend this resolution-
At what point?
I will call on you after we take up the other motions to amend.
Okay, thank you.
All right, discussion on the motion to amend offered by our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Please move.
All right, I will call for a voice vote on this in the first instance. If you are in favor of those changes described by Mr. Wells, you should vote yes. If you are opposed, you should vote no. All those in favor, well, actually, I'm sorry, we can adopt this upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to those proposed amendments?
Objection. Sorry.
All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend item fifteen. If you are in favor of the proposed amendments, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. And proceed to poll your delegation.
Did we understand, Mr. Moderator, the reasons for the objection? Would that be helpful?
I'm happy to do that, Mr. Moderator. Well, it's, it's up to you. Ed Diddakis, District One.
I, I apologize for the confusion I've created here. I just thought we probably all saw it the same way. I think there's a lot of confusion with the suggestion that either the Appointments Committee makes the nomination, or the nomination comes from the floor. I don't understand what that means. Does that mean that you go through the vetting process with the Appointments Committee, they make a nomination, and then all of a sudden, that person comes forward as a member of the Claims Committee might have, a member of labor contracts might have, and then they're challenged on the floor of the RTM? That doesn't make sense. I think we've done it-
Mr. Diddakis, in our rules currently, all nominations that come to us, or that can be made by the RTM have this provision about-
They all do?
From the floor.
Well, then, okay. I withdraw my objection.
My understanding, Mr. Wells, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were, you were just making this proposed rule consistent with the rest of our rules?
Yeah, that's right. I, I will add one thing to that.
Okay.
You said it was substantive.
I, I did. But there is a second provision in there-
About the ten.
That, that allows there be a petition of ten RTM members to bring a candidate forth that way. But my committee didn't have any interest in adding that to this particular Commission. So, we did put in one provision from, which is a standard rule for any nomination, that it can be from the RTM floor, but not by petition.
Okay. All right, so you are withdrawing your objection, Mr. D-
I will withdraw my objection.
All right, is there any other objection to the proposed amendments offered by Legislative and Rules? Hearing none, that the motion to amend offered by our Legislative and Rules Committee is adopted upon unanimous consent. All right, we will now take up Parks and Recreation. Karen Sodikon.
I'm trying to figure out what to do.
I think what Doug has done is fine.
The lead sentence, in addition to such member's duties as ex officio, we wanted the word non-voting put in there. Is it possible that I can?
Well, I would assume that's in the ordinance, is it? I don't know.
It's, is it in the ordinance?
I assume it's in the ordinance.
Because we want that statement.
Under Roberts' rules, unless specified, an ex officio member does have the right to vote.
That's right. That was the question.
But, but, but it's, we adopted an ordinance that would have provided that. We, we wouldn't do that in our rules.
All right, then I, I think that we can leave the changes. Dave, David, do you, Mr. Detchin is on my committee, do you want to comment?
Right now, we're taking up motions to amend item fifteen.
Let me see if I can explain what our concern was in the Parks and Rec. The concern we had was that the, the town charter says that the person is a non-voting ex-official member, which would suggest that they have all rights and responsibilities of an, of a non-voting ex-official member, including participation and the like in the discussion and so forth. However, paragraph two begins by simply saying, the responsibility of this appointed ex-official member of the RTM shall be as follows. That seems to suggest that it's an exclusive listing of what is supposed to be that person's responsibilities. It seems to be in contradiction with what's in the charter. As a result, we were going to add-
First of all, it's not a charter, it's, it's a code of ordinances.
I understand it, but it seems to be in contradiction with what's in seven A one.
But our rules can't amend. If we're, if the ordinance is to be amended, it would have to be amended-
The idea was, the idea was to try to eliminate the confusion by saying, in addition to his responsibilities, or his or her responsibilities, as an ex-official member, he shall also, these seem to be additional duties, in addition to what he has, his responsibilities as a member of the commit, of the Commission.
All right, so where are we? Are we offering an amendment?
Yes, I think we would suggest the language as Karen had previously proposed it, we would suggest eliminating A, because that seems to me to be, it seems to us to be self-evident because he's an ex-official member, he's supposed to attend. And then, as far as B and C go, they would become A and B, but the amendments that have already been approved in the previous amendment are perfectly fine as part of A and B, the, the old B and C becoming A and B. So, the changes that have already been made by the first amendment are perfectly fine in the amended.
All right, so the only proposed change is to delete two A-
Right, and, and modify the initial language.
B becomes A, and C becomes B.
Right, and then in addition, it would, the language, the responsibility would be a, a change with the language that Karen read previously.
What is that language?
She can read it to you. In addition to such member's duties as an ex-official member of the Harbor Management Committee, such member shall also. And then, A and B.
Okay.
All right.
All right, is there an objection to that amendment? No? All right. All right, that amendment shall be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Addressing item fifteen and the Harbor Commission resolution, I agree with all of the prior amendments. I would like to add a section after it says, where the legislative rules changed it to nomination by, by either the Appointments Committee, comma, or nominations on the floor, comma, or a petition of ten RTM members. The reason being is that is the format that is used consistently throughout our rules and our operations. and our operations. So I would like to have consistency. One of the problems we've had in RTM is that everything seems to be different depending what we're dealing with, and where we can have as much consistency and dependability, I think it would be wise to have, to have that conformity. The second thing is, you can have a nomination of the Appointments Committee, which will be well noticed and vetted by the committees. An appoint, nomination of the floor is just that, and that's a little sudden for people. A petition of ten would theor, I would think, arrive before the meeting of the RTM, so there would be time for people to consider and, and talk about it. I would assume, if people were smart, by petition of ten, they would, would make that before the Standing Committee meeting, so they can be properly vetted and have smooth sailing. So I would respectfully suggest that we adopt that amendment to add, or by petition of ten RTM members, as inconsistent with the regular rules.
All right, let's just see if we have those rules, if I can...
Actually, I think the actual consistency would be nomination by Appointments Committee, petition by ten RTM, and nomination from the floor would be how the others read, I believe, just if we want to be particularly consistent.
All right, this is in the rules, you know, what we're referring to is Section Romanum R. Three, Organization and Procedures. Section H, which talks about appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. One is on nomination by Board of Selectmen or RTM. Two says by petition, and I will read that, because I think that's what we're talking about. Other nominations for appointments on motion of the RTM may be, may be made by a written statement, signed by at least ten members of the RTM, and presented to the town clerk at least seven business days before the meeting at which the nominations are to be acted on. The town clerk shall mail a copy of such statement as soon as possible to all RTM members.
Even better.
All right, so essentially what you're saying is, you're intending not to write that out of this particular appointment. That's, that's your intent.
I would, yeah, the phrasing you had, by a statement signed by ten, as long as it's consistent with our rules, I would approve, I would, I would prefer that. The point is consistency.
So, so if we, what you would say, "Or by petition as provided in Section 3H2 of the RTM..."
That would be fine, that would be excellent.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second to that? All right, is there an objection to that? Hearing none, that may be adopted upon unanimous consent. All right, we now have an amended item 15 before us. Discussion on item 15. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Item 15 is amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. Have I announced the combined calendar vote yet? All right, these were items five, six, eight, nine, ten, twelve, and thirteen. Those in favor, one seventy-six, opposed, five, abstaining, two, the combined calendar items have carried. Item sixteen now comes before us. Who is presenting that on behalf of District Eight? Item sixteen, which is coming from District Eight. Mr. Von Keiseling, Chair of District Eight.
My apologies, Mr. Moderator, I was, I was multitasking. Sixteen is a unanimous, by unanimous vote of District Eight, put before the RTM for its consideration, resolved to amend the RTM Section Number One, Article VG of the Rules, the RTM shall be amended as follows. Do I need to read the whole three pages, Mr. Moderator?
No, it's as appears on the call.
As appears on the call.
You can summarize it if you'd like.
The purpose of this, again, was consistency. As many of you know, in nineteen, in, the moderator was on that committee which revised the rules, I believe, about ten years ago, and one of the purposes was to bring the RTM schedules and view of the budget process in sync with that of the BET. In that, there was a schedule prescribed. Since that time, the BET changed its schedule, so it no longer is consistent. So one of the purposes of this is to bring that in, to sync with the BET's calendars, so that we can do this efficiently. The second thing was to enable committees to fi, give a process by which they can keep up to date and pro, and report to the rest of the RTM. One of the problems we find is it's sometimes difficult for any, any member of the RTM, not on a particular committee, to access the reports of that committee, to know what's going on. This is simply providing a method by which those, those reports and any information which a committee has developed and wishes to, to share, is out there for everybody accessible, you know, now.
All right, thank you. That being offered on behalf of...
There is one third, there is one third major.
Pardon me?
One third major, and that was the ability of, of a district to, by two-thirds vote, to put an item for discussion, not vote, before the RTM.
Okay, so it's as appears on the call?
As appears.
All right, that being offered on behalf of one of our districts, it does not require a second. Now, this was referred to all committees, so I invite committee chairs to come forward, and Doug Wells will start us off with the Legislative and Rules Report.
We had Jason Auerbach and Barry Wickert, who were two of the three individuals who have spearheaded this rules change suggestion from District Eight, with us last Monday evening. John Eddy was the third, but he couldn't make it because of business obligations. They, the, Mr. Wickert and Mr. Auerbach reported that they have consulted with at least fifty members of the RTM. They've also addressed the rule changes with members of the BET, as well as Mr. Tessie. They stated that this rule change regarding the budgetary process would track the BET budget schedule and would enhance transparency and accountability. Some members of our committee expressed concern regarding the way in which the budget rule has been written, believing it would be made clearer with more careful drafting. The proponents were asked whether they would be willing to work with a subcommittee of the Legislative and Rules Committee to revise the rule changes over the course of the summer, with an eye towards presenting this to the RTM at its September meeting. They responded they would be willing to do this, it being their intention and hope that this new rule could be in place by next September at the beginning of the budget cycle. District Two and our committee then moved to refer this item sixteen to the Legislative and Rules Committee to revise the resolution with the District Eight proponents for presentation of a substitute resolution at our September meeting. Our vote on the motion to refer was eleven zero, District Four absent.
Thank you. Do we have other reports on item sixteen? Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee report.
So, Mr. Von Keiseling just commented that this is likely to get postponed, but I will tell you that...
It's referred.
Refered. But Land Use did take it up, and actually, we voted in favor, nine zero one. Districts one and seven absent. I, I will post, I will wait and give you the full report when this comes back in September.
All right. John Harkins with the Town Services Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and fellow members of the RTM, and guests. We took this up and decided that, that the vote was zero, four, five. Districts five, six, ten, and eleven voted no. Districts one, two, three, eight, and twelve voted to abstain. Districts four, seven, and nine were absent. The general discussion was largely negative, alleviated only by the occasional uncertainty due to the complexity of the document, the relatively short time the committee had it, and the lack of participation by anyone who had drafted it. The concerns were that the draft placed an excessive burden of time on RTM members, having the consequence of excluding very many members, especially non-retirees, who had responsibilities beyond the RTM. This complexity appeared to militate toward the excessive and novel involvement of members in policy matters, as well as micromanaging. Concern was also expressed as to the lack of clarity of the initiative's ultimate purpose. The principal reasons for those voting negatively, overlay complex, and adds on our responsibilities on RTM members, not sure what the ultimate purpose is, document needs clarification and appears impractical, inappropriate and unnecessary revision of RTM's function and process, and the document exceeds the RTM responsibilities. Those who abstained indicated a lack of information from those proposing the document. We didn't have any representative, actually, from the sponsor of the resolution. Lack of understanding of the document's purpose and consequence, lack of information, too complex, and not enough time to read and consider it, and lack of information. Thank you very much.
Stephen Meskers with our Education Committee report.
The Education Committee met on Monday. I guess in summary, so we don't get repetitive on this, our, our vote was seven, three, zero on the item, on the motion to refer. In our case, we were thinking to refer it to Legislative and Rules and the Budget Overview Committee. After, that was after some discussion, we had the benefit of Mr. Von Keiseling to illuminate the issue. We subsequently voted on the merits as it stands, and our vote was zero, six, four. Basically, on the, on the same issue that we, that we had people who felt that there was concern for, on the information, that this was an unnecessary change, particularly on the request of, of to set items on the call for informational purposes. We felt that this would limit the moderator's goal, role as gatekeeper in helping us stay on track and be organized. And other members felt that the current budget review practices of the Education Committee worked very well, and didn't see the benefit of any, any separate groups setting the process or timetable for us. And that was our report.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo with Public Works Committee report.
The Public Works Committee took up this item. We had a rather long discussion on various aspects of the proposal, which requires extensive involvement by both Standing Committee Chairman and the new RTM subcommittees and their chairman, to be formed, which would become involved with the budget process, beginning in September and every month thereafter. This will embed the RTM in every facet of the budget process, beginning even before the departments have made their submissions, continuing through the first selectman's proposed budget, and continuing ahead with the BET's budget committee's work and the full BET recommended budget. Besides monitoring proceedings, the subcommittees will draw conclusions and make recommendations, as well as submit multiple reports on an ongoing basis throughout the year to the RTM. These reports will then be recorded by committee chairman and substance, sorry, submitted it to the town clerk for posting online. The vote was none in favor, six opposed, five abstentions. Districts one, seven, eight, nine, and eleven abstained. District Two was absent. The no votes were based on opinions that ranged from the proposal being too complicated, therefore needing simplification. It would add another layer of bureaucracy to our government. It duplicates the work of the existing Budget Overview Committee, and therefore is unnecessary. Those who abstained did so, felt that the proposal needed more work, was not sure if this was needed, not sure it would be worth the time and effort of both the subcommittee members or the RTM prior to the spring meetings. No one was at our meeting to answer questions. Following this vote, an additional discussion took place. Recognizing that the comments made at this time, the chairman called for an informal raising of hands to see if there was any interest that had not been captured by the previous vote. The question was, how many of you supported the intent of the proposal? Regardless of how they voted earlier, eight members raised their hands and felt they would like to have had more information and an explanation of the rationale for the proposal. Thank you. Oh, our vote on this was, I gave it to you, zero, six, five.
Michael Warner with our Finance Committee report.
Good evening, fellow members. We took this up on June first. We had with us Barry Rickert and Jason Auerbach to explain this item. Let me start with a vote, and then I'll tell you the thinking and rationale that went behind it. The vote on this was three, seven, zero. Fundamentally, the Finance Committee had a number of concerns. One was, what you've already heard, does this add a layer of bureaucracy to our proceedings that we already have? With a group of two hundred and forty-plus people, do we need to do that? Second was a concern of several, including myself. We're not sure we have our arms around this enough to know what the unintended consequences could be. As someone who has written a number of policies in a past life and have the scars to prove it, I can tell you that unintended consequences is no small matter. Others suggested it was an additional layer of bureaucracy, and interestingly, in the Finance Committee, we found, in looking at ourselves, that we did a lot, we had many meetings where we had deep drilling on a particular subject. We would get into OPEB and, and have hypothetical and real discussions with members of the BET that would go on for forty-five minutes or longer on somewhat technical issues. And the concern that I had was, are we going to be able to write that down so everyone can understand it in a short period of time for the, for the committee meetings that would come up later in that week? And I had some concern about that. I, I would like to comment, the individuals who appeared before us were committed and knowledgeable, and I think, I think they want to make our processes better. And to that degree, I expressed to them my reluctance at having to vote no, because I think anything we can do to make our processes better, we should look at carefully. Lastly, I would suggest that we answer the following questions before we go too much further. One is, who wants this? We've heard fifty people want it, but I think a survey might be worthwhile to say, who wants this, and why? Is this going to make our decision-making better, or not? And anything we can do to improve the quality of our decisions and the speed of those decisions, I'm for. And I would ask the proponents of this to, to work with us to see if there's a way we can do that. I think one of the negatives we're dealing with is, I think the two proponents were spread pretty thin, and they didn't have the staff to be at every meeting, to have maybe a couple of meetings to answer questions and make everyone fully comfortable with their understanding of what is being proposed. This is big. This is something that can affect not only the town staff, and what they will have to do to participate and answer questions, but chairman, chairpersons as well. So I would say go slow, I would be open-minded about it, and our committee, we had a few people who were dead-set against this, and we had a few people who were for it. So I would keep an open mind, and I'm sure it will come back to us. But once again, our vote was three, seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling, did you want to...
Did we wish to take the motion? Committee motion?
Well, at this point, I will call upon our Legislative and Rules Committee to offer its motion to refer.
I would like to speak to that motion.
Okay. Doug Wells with that motion.
The Legislative and Rules Committee moves to refer this resolution to Legislative and Rules Committee for the purpose of offering a substitute resolution in September.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. We're going to have discussion on this. Discussion? All right, Mr. Mesker, all right, so discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to refer, item sixteen, back to the Legislative and Rules Committee. Mr. Meskers.
It seems that the motion has two components, one is scheduling and reporting on the budget...
You're talking about this pending motion to refer? The motion to refer is just to refer it to Legislative and Rules, and what they do with it will be up to them. with it will be up to them. All right, further discussion on this motion to refer. Mr. Von Keiseling.
I thank everybody for their consideration of this. As was said to this, this is nothing that we should do quickly and speedily. As I said on an earlier motion, we want consistency and clarity and transparency. This is about information and being, have as educated a vote as possible for the RTM as simply as possible. What this committee did, and it was a subcommittee of District Eight that worked on this over a year, is they conferred with the various leadership in town, BET, First Selectman, other people involved in the budget process. They had a pretty much unanimous acceptance of the idea for this improved participation by the RTM on this item. The second thing I would point out to you is, what they have done is they've tuned up, if you like, what's already on the books. A lot of people are under pressure that this is a lot of new...
Mr. Von Keiseling, I recognized you on the motion to refer.
Quite right. I stand corrected. I would, because this has many issues, and we have tried to get it out as much as possible, I think the subcommittee in our district would welcome having this referred for more digestion and discussion. Things can always be improved. I also embrace the Education Committee's motion to include the BOC, which certainly has an interest in this. I know that some of the, already of the members of the BOC have stepped forward to work with this. So I would say that I would, I don't know how we handle the two motions. Can the motion be amended?
There's only one motion. This is a motion to refer to Legislative and Rules.
And how do...
We're going to take a vote on that. Are you in favor, or are you not?
I am very much in favor. Please support. Thank you.
All right, further discussion on the motion to refer. Mr. Auerbach, Jason Auerbach, District Eight.
I just want to actually take a moment to thank everyone who met with us throughout the year. I want especially Mike Warner for your comments earlier. We, the whole point of this exercise was to involve as many people as possible. This was definitely talked about tremendously within District Eight. Specifically, we'd like to thank Mr. Josh Brown, who was a leader and a mentor to us on this process. We appreciate that. Chris, for your support as well. We fully support, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the motion was to have a subcommittee work with the District Eight Subcommittee, so we could continue the process forward. So this would be between District Eight and Legislative and Rules. We fully support that, because any opportunity to clarify what it is and make it simple and align the calendars and allow the RTM to play its historical role within the budget process is a welcome opportunity. So I'd like to thank everyone for your support for this past year, and we look forward to working with the Legislative and Rules Committee in order to clarify. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. All right, I will call for a voice vote. If you are in favor of referring item 16 to our Legislative and Rules Committee, you should vote yes. If you are opposed to that motion, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion to refer item 16 to our Legislative and Rules Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion is carried. Item 17 now comes before us. Dawn Fortunato.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Whereas on March 10th, 2015, pursuant to Charter Section 99, the Planning and Zoning Commission, PNZ, approved the Housing Authority of the Town of Greenwich, application for municipal improvement, PLPZ 2014-00663, at Armstrong Court as a municipal improvement, and PNZ published its findings in the Greenwich Time on March 17th, 2015, effective March 18th, 2015. And whereas pursuant to Charter Section 100, eight Greenwich property owners referred PNZ's decision to the RTM on April 13th, 2015, resolved the RTM rejects the Housing Authority proposal.
All right. This is a substitute resolution, as was just read. Will a member please move the adoption of that resolution?
I'm moved.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the substitute resolution on item 17. Is there any need to reread it?
Yes.
All right. There are two whereas clauses and one resolved. Whereas on March 10th, 2015, pursuant to Charter Section 99, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the Housing Authority of the Town of Greenwich, application for municipal improvement, with the designation at Armstrong Court as a municipal improvement, and PNZ published its finding in the Greenwich Time on March 17th, 2015, effective March 18th, 2015. And whereas pursuant to Charter Section 100, eight Greenwich property owners referred PNZ's decision to the RTM on April 13th, 2015, resolved the RTM rejects the Housing Authority of the Town of Greenwich proposal. That is now currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Peter Berg, Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. So we took up this item last Monday night. We had invited the Housing Authority, the town attorney, the referring neighbors, the First Selectman, the Board of Education, the town planner. However, we couldn't take it up until 10:00 PM due to a mix-up, and by that time, we had lost the town planner. I'm not sure the Board of Ed ever came. So we did have the town attorney, John Wetmore, the Town Land Use Council, that is. John Wetmore, he began the discussion by explaining that this item before the RTM is specifically a planning assessment as to whether the project was in conformance with the plan of conservation and development, and therefore was eligible for municipal improvement status, a requirement for the project to move forward. He also emphasized that it was not a zoning or budgetary assessment, which was outside the scope of consideration. In addition, he said that because it was a referral from eight town residents, it was not an appeal, but a, quote, "de novo," unquote, decision under Section 100B of the Charter, meaning that the RTM was deciding on its own, separate and apart, from whatever may or may not have been presented to Planning and Zoning when it made its decision. We were also informed that failure to decide would delay any action on the project. There was much decision, much discussion on procedural steps. We were informed that the Legislative and Rules Committee had voted the item was not in legal order, but I believe we'll hear an updated report in a minute. Kathy Landy, an Armstrong Court resident, said renovation and expansion of Armstrong Court was long overdue, and it was needed to provide both workforce housing and low-income housing, and she asked the committee to vote down the referral. Christopher Bristol, attorney for the Housing Authority, presented the case for MI for the Housing Authority. He noted several corrections in the text of the explenos of the call, particularly the apartment count. It will have 48 more bedrooms, not 84, but only six more apartments, because in the course of renovation, the existing buildings are being, all of the one-bedroom units will be combined with others to make family-sized apartments, reducing the number of units existing overall, but increasing the number of bedrooms. The addition of six additional townhouse clusters along Hamilton Avenue will bring the unit count to a total of six more units, that is apartments, overall. Bristol made the point that final site plan approval has not been granted, only a preliminary hearing. The Housing Authority will be resubmitting for final in the future, but Planning and Zoning had granted MI status. He said that the Housing Authority proposal is in conformance with the plan of conservation and development, in that increasing affordable housing is referenced in at least four recommendations of the POCD, numbers 3.6, 3.7, 3.12, and 3.16. 3.6 specifically refers to the Housing Authority working with public and private groups to provide more housing, more low-income housing. This project works with loans and grants from both state and private sources. The other sections of the POCD refer to providing more low-income housing for seniors, encouraging more affordable housing in areas served by mass transit, and to update the range of housing choices available. Next, we had Dawn Fortunato. She spoke on behalf of the eight referring citizens. Dawn read a revised version of the explenos. The points she highlighted were that her son had lead poisoning and was concerned about there being lead and other environmental issues on the Armstrong Court site. She agreed that the property was in horrible condition and should be renovated, but that building new units would encourage out-of-town, low-income residents to move here, and that it would cause more racial imbalance at Hamilton Avenue School. She felt that combining units would encourage more families and fewer seniors to live at Armstrong Court. She felt that Armstrong Court was a, quote, "ghetto built on a dump." She felt the Housing Authority was, she felt the Housing Authority was poorly managed and needed to better maintain its properties and its books, should be open to town review. She was concerned that if state money was used to build the project, the state would control the housing and move out-of-town, low-income residents into Armstrong Court. She felt that environmental issues were being hidden by the Housing Authority, and that soil sampling should be done before MI status is granted. Anthony Johnson of the Housing Authority spoke next. He spoke to several of Dawn's points. Specifically, he said the Housing Authority does not and cannot choose who is a resident based on race. He said that no one at Armstrong Court has reported lead poisoning. Sam Romeo of the Housing Authority pointed out that the project was being financed by loans from the state and private sources, and did not involve financing by the town. He said that many of the issues raised by the neighbors are not germane in an MI decision. Soil testing and other environmental issues are part of the site plan approval. Their site plan approval is only tentative, and zoning has not been fully resolved. The MI approval just deals with planning. Michael Finkbeiner spoke as a consultant to the neighbors. He said he specialized in land use issues. He showed a chart of the racial imbalance in the various elementary schools, and said he felt racial balance should be a planning concern for low-income housing, and claimed that Katie DeLuca of Planning and Zoning said it was a planning concern. However, the town attorney said there was no law or rule on the books in planning and zoning concerning racial balance. Lastly, Mr. Tony DiAndrea, whose firm provided site plan engineering for the project, said that extensive soil testing down to original native soil was in the process of being completed, and if any remediation is needed, it will be part of the final site plan submission to Planning and Zoning. There were questions about the combination of one-bedroom units into three-bedroom units, contained in the Housing Authority plan, and the possible effect on the schools and the available affordable housing for the elderly. Several delegates expressed concern about this shift, and no overall affordable housing strategy was presented. Peter Berg from District Eight, that's me, expressed, expressed concern that he felt the project would have been in better conformance with the POCD if it had focused on increasing low-income housing for seniors. Our vote on this item was three, five, two, with Districts one and seven absent. As the referral was written in the negative, a no vote is, a no vote...
Would be to approve the application.
Is a, is a, is support for MI. We, normally, we take a poll on no votes, but in the, under the circumstances, no poll of no votes was taken.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We took this matter up last Monday evening, and then we took it up again this Monday evening. This is a referral from neighbors abutting the Armstrong Court facility. We had, also had Dawn Fortunato address our committee last Monday evening. She read from her prepared statement, and Mr. Berg's report already told you what she said, as well as far as her concerns about this MI. We also heard from Michael Finkbeiner, who is serving as a consultant to the Booth Street residents, Booth Court residents. He identifies himself as a land surveyor. He told us that last week, the federal EPA passed new rules that greatly expand the definition of wetlands and require federal permit to issue before any state and local permits can be issued for any construction in and around a wetlands area. He further stated these rules, new rules, were retroactive to the passage of the original Environmental Protection Act in 1972. However, he could provide us with no documentation to verify the retroactivity of these new federal rules. He claims these rules would make the MI issued by the town invalid. Mr. Finkbeiner urged that this matter should be held in abeyance until such time as a final site plan is approved by PNZ and all federal and state permits be obtained. We then heard from Attorney John Wetmore from the town attorney's office. He stated he was unaware of the passage of these federal rules, so could not offer an opinion regarding their application to this MI. He explained that the resolution represents a de novo proceeding and is technically not an appeal from the Planning and Zoning decision. He stated that an MI has a planning function separate from zoning matters. As to the various allegations made by the petitioner, Ms. Fortunato, he doesn't believe that environmental, zoning, or diversity issues are relevant to the RTM's decision-making process here. The issue of planning is the issue that the RTM should consider. He stated that while the resolution is inartfully drafted, because it makes reference to Sections 99 and 100 of the Charter, it is in legal order. Mr. Wetmore went on to say that the critical issue for the RTM to consider in connection with this MI request is whether the MI has been approved by Planning, that has been approved by Planning and Zoning, is in conformance with the plan of conservation and development. Mr. Wetmore went on to reference various sections of the POCD that relate to affordable housing and its proximity to public transportation, and he provided us with his opinion that the MI is in conformance with the plan of conservation and development. We heard from Attorney Chris Bristol, who's counsel to the Housing Authority, who reviewed with us sections of the POCD concerning the need for affordable housing. Mr. Bristol also pointed out that the substitute resolution is factually inaccurate, because it makes reference to 84 beds, and the project only provides for a net increase in 48 beds. However, that factual inaccuracy was corrected by the substitute resolution that we're considering this evening. We also spoke with Attorney Fox, who was asked for his opinion regarding the factual mistakes in the poorly drafted resolution. He said that despite the inaccuracies in the drafting issues, the MI resolution is properly before the RTM. We also heard from the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, Mr. Tony Johnson, who said that we should not consider this challenge to the MI, because there has been compliance with all procedural requirements, and there has been no failure of process. This claim for rejection of Planning and Zoning MI should be dismissed or denied. Finally, Sam Romeo handed out a blog from Alma Rogers for all committee members wherein Ms. Rogers urged the RTM to reject this resolution. Last Monday evening, we took two votes on the matter. Legal order was three in favor, seven opposed, with Districts one and four abstaining. We took a vote on the merits. Our vote there was zero, seven, five. The abstainers believe they did not have enough factual information to vote on the merits of the matter. Last Thursday, we received from Ms. Fortunato a substitute resolution, which is the one that she read tonight. Our committee felt obligated to consider this substitute resolution, because, for one thing, it deleted the factual inaccuracies in the substitute resolution, which was critical to some of the votes that were taken in our committee as the legal order, because it was factually incorrect. Some of the voters thought that they couldn't vote as the legal order. So we took the matter up again at 7:30 this evening. We had Dawn Fortunato there, as well as Town Attorney John Wetmore, and we considered the substitute resolution. Our vote, we also had Mr. Wetmore update us on the federal regulation issue that was addressed by Mr. Finkbeiner, and he said that he had spoken with officials and indicated that there would be no regulations in place for several months, so that it doesn't appear that that is a matter of concern at this point. So our vote as the legal order on this substitute resolution was seven, I'm sorry, 10 in favor, one opposed, with District seven absent. Our vote on the merits was zero in favor, nine opposed, with Districts one and eight abstaining.
Thank you. Dawn, discussion on item 17. Dawn Fortunato. Dawn Fortunato?
My name is Dawn Fortunato. I am honored and privileged to live in a town where residents like me and my neighbors can appear before our fellow residents to make our case. We are so fortunate to have a town charter and a representative town meeting that allows me to speak here tonight and ask you to question what is happening in our neighborhood. So, whatever you decide tonight, know that we are grateful. I am a lifelong resident of the town of Greenwich. My ancestors immigrated to the Chickahominy section of Greenwich from Poland in 1911. Our street was called Hamilton Park at the time. It was a rural area. We were surrounded by farms. There was a small pond at the end of our street where residents would skate in the winter. The road was dirt until the 1960s, when Lower Wyker was campaigning for first electmen. He promised my uncle he would pave the road if he secured his vote. Our road was paved. It was a safe, quiet neighborhood where we could ride our bikes and play in the street. In 1951, Armstrong Court was built next door. At first, Armstrong Court was fantastic. It was a model for subsidized housing in the United States. It has only been in recent decades that the buildings have been allowed to deteriorate to their present sad condition. From the outset, my family and our neighbors embraced our new neighbors. We never objected to living next to subsidized housing. I am a graduate of Hamilton Avenue School, Western Middle School, and Greenwich High School. Today, I am a mother, a member of the Hamilton Avenue PTA Association, and a devoted class mom. I volunteer at the school when time permits. Many of my family and neighbors attend the same neighborhood schools our children now attend. Many of my neighbors work in town. Many of them work or are retired from the town of Greenwich. As you can imagine, taking on the Housing Authority has been an ordeal for me and my neighbors. The Housing Authority has not been helpful. I feel we have been bullied. We have not been able to get all the facts. We have spent many hours and many months fighting over our little neighborhood. We are not lawyers. We do not have a lawyer, but we find ourselves up against the Housing Authority's lawyers. When we asked questions about the impact of the proposed expansion on the racial imbalance in Hamilton Avenue School, I was accused of being a racist. How would you feel if you were called a racist? Why can't we talk about our racial balance issue? Isn't that a serious issue? The Housing Authority has repeatedly said that the problem at Hamilton Avenue School is not its problem. Whose problem is it? My neighbors and I do not object to the renovation of Armstrong Court. We are in support of it. Armstrong Court is in badly need of renovation. We got involved only when the Housing Authority proposed a major expansion of Armstrong Court. The original plan included a four-story building on the lowest part of the Housing Authority's property in wetlands within a flood zone. The driveway that they were using for parking was to empty out on our street. The proposal would have added an overwhelming increase to traffic, to our cul-de-sac. It would have stripped away the very character of the neighborhood we have grown to love, where our children ride their bikes, where our neighbors walk their dogs and get exercise. In addition to the increase in traffic, we objected to the loss of open green space and the increase in impervious surface that would cause more flooding. In response to our persistent objections, the Housing Authority finally agreed not to build in that location, so we won that round. Having addressed the issues of flooding and traffic, however, we began to focus on environmental issues. With all the publicity about soil contamination at the high school and other sites, we realized, living near the dump, that we might also have a serious issue in our neighborhood. I won't dwell on this because I'm told it's not relevant to the MI, but it is important to us. We have an unusual number of residents on our street and in the vicinity who have died of cancer. Others are in remission. I am one of them. My son contracted a serious case of lead poisoning at the age of one. Lead was found in my soil. It was also found in the Housing Authority's soil. Is this normal? We asked the Housing Authority for information. The Housing Authority has been anything but cooperative with us. We want the soil to be thoroughly tested before the Housing Authority starts to dig. Isn't that reasonable? Tonight, you are being asked to decide if the proposed expansion of Armstrong Court is a municipal improvement. Now, I've learned that the test of a municipal improvement is consistency with the town's Plan of Conservation and Development, the POCD. To support its project, the Housing Authority has cited four recommendations in the Plan of Conservation and Development to support its project. They are Recommendations 3.6, 3.7, 312, and 3.16. Let's talk about them one at a time. First Recommendation 3.16, Recommendation 3.16 says, "Update the range of housing choices available." Update the range of housing choices available. This recommendation appears in the section on senior housing, but the Housing Authority project eliminates all 12 one-bedroom apartments at Armstrong Court, where seniors can live. Instead of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, there will only be two- and three-bedroom family apartments. So, how is the Housing Authority's proposed project consistent with the recommendation to update the range of housing choices available? Second Recommendation is 3.12. Recommendation 3.12 says, "Encourage affordable and moderate-income housing in areas served by transit." Affordable and moderate. But Armstrong Court is not affordable nor moderate-income housing. It's subsidized housing. The POCD defines five categories of housing. There is market-rate housing, subsidized housing, affordable housing, moderate-income housing, and senior housing. Armstrong Court has always been subsidized housing. Is the Housing Authority changing Armstrong Court from subsidized housing? If not, how is the project consistent with the recommendation to encourage affordable and moderate-income housing? Third Recommendation 3.7, Recommendation 3.7 says, "Encourage subsidized housing in areas served by transit and owned by the Housing Authority." Again, is the Housing Authority adding subsidized housing, or is it affordable, or is it moderate? Whatever it is, consider this. Armstrong Court has 144 apartments today. The Housing Authority is proposing to add 59,000 square feet, but it's only adding six more apartments. Only six. Consider, instead of adding only six units, the Housing Authority could add 75 one-bedroom apartments at 800 square feet each. Wouldn't that make more sense? The POCD says we need more senior housing. Why eliminate the current one-bedroom units? Why not add more? Finally, Recommendation 3.6, 3.6 says, "The Housing Authority should partner with public and private groups to provide more subsidized housing." Okay, let's partner. But why can't they partner to build senior apartments? The POCD clearly calls for more senior apartments, but where does it call for more family apartments? Page 24 of the POCD says, "People are living longer and healthier lives. The older age group, 55 and above, will continue to grow. The baby boom, people born between 1946 and 1964, has entered or will enter this age group during the next 20 years and will comprise approximately 30% of the town's population by the year 2020, up from 25% in 2000." So, the POCD clearly calls for more senior housing, and many of these seniors will be working well into their 60s and 70s, some into their 80s because they don't have pensions and limited life savings. Does Armstrong Court need to be renovated? Absolutely, yes, it does. Is the Armstrong Court expansion project consistent with the POCD? I don't think so. Does the Housing Authority need to add to the problem at Hamilton Avenue School? Is it fair to call me a racist by raising this issue? In conclusion, is the proposed expansion of Armstrong Court a municipal improvement, really? Please support me and my neighbors tonight by voting yes on your resolution to deny MI. We thank each and every one of you for your tireless efforts volunteering and committing yourselves to the RTM. It is because of dedicated volunteers like you that we have such a wonderful town.
Thank you. Paul Settlemeyer to be followed by Alex Capoza.
Fellow members of the RTM, I think the previous speaker brought up many issues that still have to be addressed by the land use agencies within the town of Greenwich. I don't believe all those issues should be addressed by the RTM in considering the municipal improvement status, which is before us tonight. I am a member of the Land Use Committee, who voted no on this item. I was also a member of one of four POCD review committees. I was chairman of the Transportation Committee, which interfaced actively with other committees, such as town-owned properties, and the Housing Committee. There's been a lot of work done by the Housing Committee in working on proposals to expand housing options within the town of Greenwich. I believe that we need to permit this proposed renovation by the Housing Authority to move through the land use process. That is what the planning and zoning people in their review determined. That has been reviewed by other agencies. This is not a done project. Areas of design, financing, soil contamination. In the Explanos that you have in front of you, it relates to issues of Parsonage Cottage, and I do not believe the issues of Parsonage Cottage relate to the renovation projects at Armstrong Court. The issues of education are difficult, but they are not part of what I get from the understanding when the town attorney addressed the Land Use Committee and said that what we must determine is whether this item is in conformity or non-conformity with the Plan of Conservation and Development. You can interpret those issues, and I think I would like to hear from the Housing Authority on the issue that was raised on subsidized and affordable housing, and their explanation of that and some of their plans for Armstrong Court. But my belief is that we should vote no on this issue and permit the dialogue on the renovation of Armstrong Court to move through the land use agencies. Thank you.
Alex Capoza to be followed by Chris Von Kaiseling.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, and government officials. My name is Alex Capoza. I am a resident of the town of Greenwich, particularly in Chickahominy. Armstrong Court is probably about not even half a mile from me, and I'm here because, again, I have the opportunity, you know, through our venues to be able to address you guys, which are the important audience, as opposed to the newspapers and the articles and all that. I wanted to reach the people that can, in fact, make a difference, and that would be you guys. I wanted to express my support for the improvement of Armstrong Court. I've someone that worked as a parent liaison many years ago under the direction of the Board of Education. I got to meet some of these families. I have seen the conditions, and back then, five, six, seven years ago, they were in need of repairs and needed to be something done about it. Now, it's in front of you. Tests have been done. Reports have been placed. Plans have been proposed. Work has been done, and you're halfway there. And I'm just reaching out to you guys to think about other families that live there, and I'm pretty sure that some of those reports that have come, you know, from the housing and so forth have been based on the needs that they have found directly with the Housing Authority and the people that live there. So, I'm pretty sure this just not, just came out from, you know, somebody's, you know, top of the head. And take into consideration, you know, the necessity, this is not a "I want to." This is "they need to," and it needs to be improved. I don't know about you, but some of those kids that, you know, we're speaking about, you know, are our neighbors, and some of these families moved forward because of the opportunity to live in housing and then grow from there, and they could be your neighbors and you didn't even know that. So, they're just individuals and families just like us. This is not about labeling. This should not be the issue. Whatever items have to be revised, I'm confident that the town of Greenwich and their officials and the parties involved would do the necessary steps to make sure that this project moved forward. Thank you so much.
Mr. Von Kaiseling to be followed by Kathy Landy.
Ladies and gentlemen, sadly, I'm before you on this. I, first of all, would ask that you reject this referral. Number one, what seems to have been slanted in the discussion is a focus on senior housing. I'm a senior. I need housing. I have a vested interest. But if you look at the full picture, which is not being put before you, the Housing Authority has a huge portfolio. It basically holds all of the affordable housing in town, at least the main proportion of it. In that portfolio are several different categories of housing, from single SRO kind of housing for somebody like me, to family housing for our workforce, and most of the people that live in Armstrong Court are employed in town, work very hard at it, but as you know, not everybody gets high wages enough. It's difficult housing, and they say, somebody told me, that if you don't make $250,000 a year, it's very hard to live comfortably in Greenwich, and I think anybody lower than that will attest to that. So, they have senior housing, family housing, they have elderly housing like Agnes Morley, they have Quarry Knowles, they have all kinds of different units and types of housing. They are looking at all of their portfolio and enhancing all of their portfolio at once, as was mentioned even by the proponent, which said there was an effort by the Housing Authority in coordination with this very project to put 48 units of senior housing right there on the northeast corner diagonally opposed, on the corner of Booth Court there, 48 units for senior housing. The opposition was such, and the delay was such, that that proposal was removed. I find it somewhat ironic. Now, 12 units up on the other side, they're complaining about that they want to have senior. It just doesn't follow logic. The point is, the Housing Authority has worked through all of their things. They have a grand plan. They are taking responsibility of their properties and servicing their whole population, which goes across the town, a different type and type. The second thing I would say is that the, if I understand correctly, the latest information for the town's attorney on this ghost EPA law that's going to come into effect, that was raised at the last minute by Mr. Finkelbean or whatever, that we couldn't do this because of the EPA, and it reaches back to 1976, and we shut everything down, and we'd be frozen. If I understand, the town's attorney's response was that whatever's happening, it won't go into effect for a number of months, which tells me that the window of opportunity is closing. If there is a problem that this legislation might prevent our going ahead in renovating something that was built in 1951 and definitely needs it, I would think that we'd be foolish to delay this. We should grab the opportunity while the window's open before it's slammed shut on us. In fact, the EPA is not a threat against it. It's a threat, in effect, for our action towards. The third thing that I very much will not subscribe to, and I will not put my name on a vote to it, are the various rationales that have been put forward as to why we should be doing this. There is a very unpleasant undercurrent here. It's almost like we want to have affirmative housing in Greenwich. We don't want certain people to live in the poor sections. They can only live in Round Hill, so we're going to move them around town. I think that's been tried before. I don't think that's going to fall very comfortably within the fair housing regulations and such, and if we vote for what's being asked us to vote for, with the rationales that are put forward as explaining why we're doing it, which would become part of the legislative record, we, all of us, are going to be held somewhat, either directly or indirectly, accountable for an idea about certain people have to be treated certain ways in town, and I don't think that I want to have my name on that, and I don't think that any of you would like to have that name, and we certainly wouldn't want to have the town's name on it. I would remind you of the last problem we had with the high school yearbook. Thank you.
Kathy Landy to be followed by Timothy Oberweger.
Hello, my name is Kathy Landy. I am tenant commissioner on the Housing Authority, and I also live at Armstrong Court. I think we have this great opportunity to get tax credits to improve our residents, and I just can't imagine not taking advantage of this and improving on what we have. Maintenance keeps up as well as they can with the property. Maintenance keeps up as well as they can with the property, and they do a good job, but it's just too much. It's, it's too old, and we're not all poverty-level people who live in this, in Armstrong Court. We're, we're very mixed people. We, I work for two nonprofits in town, but I just can't afford to live outside of there. But I'm very proud to work at the jobs that I work at. I work, I live next to, my neighbors are nurses and teachers, and, and they work in the hospitals, and they work in the offices around town. So I just wanted to say that we need this improvement, and I can understand why everybody would not want, want our town to look nicer out, inside and out. That's, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Oberweger to be followed by Peter Berg.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the R T M, I stand before you to urge you to vote no to item 17. I applaud the members who, of the community who came out and actually brought this to our attention, because I think it's great to see people who take interest and are civic-minded enough to bring something to the table. But I don't believe that their rationale nor the actual substance of their arguments hold water in the, in this matter, specifically because the P O C D is not being addressed in the proper way to question the town housing department's initiatives in terms of what type of units are going to be in Armstrong Court relative to the potential, as it talks about here, of who will sleep in these bedrooms. Additional children of different races, I think, is completely irrelevant. And quite frankly, I think it's somewhat offensive to talk about how these families that are in desperate need, regardless of race, should not be given the opportunity to live in a place that, that does have, as we just heard from the person who spoke before me, a lot of great people that do a lot of great things in this town. Therefore, I urge you to vote on number two, on number 17, in, in the negative, and I also want to point out that I think this is, again, a great thing, that we have the opportunity to bring things like this to the R T M if you are concerned. So I do applaud the people, the proponents, at least for standing up for what they believe, but I don't agree with them. Thank you.
Peter Berg to be followed by Jim Buttel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening again, fellow members. Mr. Moderator, I move to refer this item to a joint subcommittee of land use, education, finance, and health and human services to report back by December to establish the facts and make an informed recommendation to the full R T M.
All right, hang on. We're going to need more specifics from you. How many on this? This is a special committee you want to set up?
Um, yeah, that's right. I'm recommending a subcommittee with, with at least just, at least just one representative from land use, education, finance, health, and human services.
So your motion is to refer to a special committee consisting of one representative from land use, education, finance, and health and human services, and who will appoint those members?
I would have the committee chairs appoint.
Okay. So we have a motion to refer item 17 to a special committee of four R T M members, consisting of one each from land use, education, finance, health, and human services to be appointed by the chairs of each of those committees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a second to this motion to refer? It has been moved and seconded to refer item 17 to a special committee consisting of four members, one each from land use, education, finance, health, and human services, with those individuals to be appointed by the chairs of those committees. Discussion on Mr. Berg's motion to refer. Mr. Berg.
So as you've been hearing, the question before the R T M is whether the proposed expansion project is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and thus entitled to M I status under our charter. To be clear, I fully support renovation of Armstrong Court, just like, I think, most of you. The issue is not about the renovation of Armstrong Court. The issue before the R T M is about this proposed expansion of Armstrong Court. So I'm standing here asking for this referral. I do so despite my longstanding support for affordable housing in Greenwich. We need to postpone. We are faced with a decision that will have long-term impacts on the neighbors, but also on our town, and we should not rush or feel pressured to act. At the land use committee meeting last Monday, I decided that this proposal is probably not consistent with the P O C D. And you heard, you heard Dawn Fortunato talk about the basis that the housing authority gave and the, and her questions about those four recommendations in the P O C D. But the top three goals, the top three goals of the plan of conservation and development are, number one, to be and remain primarily a well-maintained residential community for all of our current and future residents; number two, to protect and enhance well-defined neighborhoods and village centers; number three, to protect and enhance overall community character and quality of life, including the quality of our schools, cultural institutions, recreation, library system, and municipal and quasi-municipal services. Now the referrers, that is Dawn Fortunato and her neighbors, face a serious threat to their traditional neighborhood. They have done their best without the benefit of costly legal counsel to protect their neighborhood and their quality of life. Some of their arguments may not be relevant, some were inartful or impolitic, but many of you have faced similar threats to your residential neighborhoods. Oversized developments, the loss of open space, developers who want to max out their F A R, buildings that loom over your house. Neighbors react as best they can, usually unfamiliar with the complexities of our town government. I have often sided with these neighbors, and I often cite the plan of conservation and development when opposing development. Last Monday at land use, I voted that item 17 is inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development, based on the case that the housing authority made, but also on my understanding of the P O C D. During my tenure on the R T M, I have consistently come to the aid of neighbors who oppose out-of-scale developments in their neighborhoods. I've opposed car dealerships, banks, C V Ss, oversized houses, cellphone towers, Starbucks, and many more. The housing authority has cited recommendations in the P O C, P O C D that don't apply to their project. They are a stretch or raise a lot of questions. It is not clear to me that the housing authority's expansion plan is the best for the town or that it considered available alternatives that may be better for the town. When I asked if senior housing would be a better solution, I was told that would be illegal. When I asked what the law, what law makes that illegal, I could not get an answer. And as you heard Ms. Fortunato say, that the, some of the housing authority leaders and some of their supporters have now resorted to calling the opponents racist. That is not helpful.
All right, we're not hearing that tonight, okay? No one is going to call anyone a racist tonight.
Two months ago, when the R T M was asked to approve an open space plan, I stood here and supported postponement despite my longstanding support of open space. A committee of R T M members, which I am chairing, is now seeking the facts, and we will report back to you in September. Tonight, I'm standing here again, asking for referral. I do so despite my longstanding support for affordable housing in Greenwich. We need to postpone. We are faced with a decision that will have long-term impacts on the neighbors, but also on our town, and we should not rush or feel pressured to act. Everyone agrees that Armstrong Court is in serious disrepair and needs extensive renovation. The issue is whether to expand it, and if so, what is the best use of the property in the best long-term interest of the town. This is the proper role of the R T M. We are good at this. We need to step back to cool off. We need to reason together. The R T M is good at making these decisions. Thank you very much.
All right. The motion to refer is debatable. Before calling for further discussion on this, I'll just ask our town, our law department, Mr. Wetmore, I understand, will, will help us out with this item, just to set the procedural context in which this item stands and what the effect of referring this would have on the project.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the R T M. John Wetmore from the town attorney's office. As I understand the question, it is what would the effect of this motion be in terms of this project proceeding? As you are all well aware, this matter is before you in accordance with section 100 of the town charter. It has been referred to you. Until the R T M takes an action to either approve or reject the municipal improvement proposal that was presented by the housing authority to the planning and zoning commission several months ago, the housing authority would be, the best way I could describe it is in a state of limbo. They will not be able to proceed with this project in any way. They will not be able to obtain their final site plan approval. Any action on the land use side that would be necessary to go forward is contingent upon the municipal improvement approval being granted, in this case, by the R T M. So the effect, Mr. Moderator, procedurally be, if this is referred, nothing further will be done on this project until this body meets again and votes to either approve in accordance with the charter or reject the M I.
Thank you. Further discussion on Mr. Berg's motion to refer. Mr. Buttel.
Mr. Moderator, former fellow members, I left you four years ago after having served 25 years as an R T M member, and one of the reasons I left was to become a housing commissioner. I've learned a lot in the three years that I've been on the commission, but I'm glad I came to speak tonight, particularly following Mr. Berg, who I served with in District Eight when I was the chairman of District Eight. And well-intentioned, but let me give you the one answer that Mr. Wetmore didn't. If you postpone this till December, you kill the project, period. Any renovation of Armstrong goes out the window. The officials of the housing authority have been working with state officials for a year in competition for state tax credits. Those $20 million in state tax credits will disappear. In my time on the town meeting, I served probably 10 years on the community development block grant board, chaired it for a period of time. Housing Authority was always in front of us with this project and that project for Armstrong Court, whether it be new roofs, or new windows, or repainting the railings. One of my proudest member, times of, of being a member of this body was when I discovered that the town had applied for a grant for $1 million to beautify Greenwich Avenue, and I convinced town fathers to give the money back. The national news media was so stunned that CNN showed up, A B C showed up, CBS showed up. They all wanted to tell a story of this tawny white-glove town turning up its nose at a federal grant. And I said, no, that's not the case. Let me show you Greenwich. And where did I take them? I took them to Quarry Knoll. I took them to Wilbur Peck. I took them to Armstrong Court. That is Greenwich. Whatever the outside world thinks of Greenwich, that is Greenwich. Those are the kids whose fathers coached the youth football leagues in town. These are our neighbors. The one thing I will agree with Mrs. Fortunato is the place is turning into a dump despite what the housing authority tries to do. Simply, this facility has outgrown its useful life. We're not talking about a renovation. We're talking about a rebuild. The other thing that's, that's come up that I just wanted to address, unfortunately, I did not, was not able to attend committee meetings, and again, I'm just learning as a new commissioner, but this is a HUD family housing project. Prior speaker, I believe it was Mr. Von Kaiseling, pointed out, we have a large portfolio of housing. The one he didn't mention was Greenwich Close, which is directly across from Town Hall, which is in fact market-rate housing. We run the gamut. We actually make a surplus on places like Greenwich Close, so we can support Armstrong Court. Not one dime of your local tax dollars go into this facility. You have to allow us to, the best thing we can do for these neighbors, there is the issue of soil. Any project we do is going to involve soil remediation. Any building that was built in 1951 is going to have lead paint that is going to become friable and is going to get into the soil and is going to have to be remediated.
No, you're not recognized for a point of information, not while the speaker is speaking.
Please, vote to vote down a referral to December. I noticed you had another item referred till September. Why December?
This is a motion to refer. This is not a motion to postpone.
No, no, I understand, but you're referring it with instructions to bring it back in December, if I heard Mr. Berg correctly.
No, it's just a motion to refer to a committee of four.
Mr. Moderator, this...
I did not hear that. Mr. Berg? Where's Mr. Berg?
I heard December, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Pardon me? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, the P O C D is what you say it is. You are the final authority on the P O C D. As it was pointed out, this is a de novo decision. What's come before, even though the attorney for the planning and zoning commission says it's in conformity, even though the planning and zoning commission says it is in conformity, ultimately, it's up to you. Vote down the motion to refer, and please, establish by voting no on the underlying motion that improving Armstrong Court, look at what we've done at Quarry Knowles, too. We are about to receive a national award for our redesign of Quarry Knoll, too.
All right, Mr. Buttel, I think you've...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Please, vote down the motion.
All right. Mr. Settlemeyer, if, if you had intended to object to the comments being made as being outside some scope, that would have been a motion, that would have been a point of order, which you may interrupt a speaker, but a motion, so I don't know what you had intended, but a motion for, a, a point of information does not allow you to interrupt. Pardon me?
We were discussing the motion to refer.
Okay, well, now we're...
I think it would be on the scope of the motion to refer that we...
I'm just telling you, if you want to interrupt a speaker, you must do it by a point of order, not a point of information. Further discussion on the pending motion to refer. Mr. Warner, to be followed by Mr. Edwards.
I will be brief. I think what's been lost in our discussion is, this project, which is proposed by the housing authority, will transform a neighborhood. It will, it will not just renovate, it will change the look and feel and character of a whole neighborhood in town. I'm from District Three, and I drive by this neighborhood often. I'm from District Three, and I drive by this neighborhood often. A few years ago, I was a member of the First Selectmen's Housing Task Force. And in two years of meetings, I learned, among other things, I learned three basic things. One is, the town does need more residential housing. Commercial expansion has been enormous. We need more workforce housing, and we need more senior housing. There's no question about that. The opportunities for change in our town are very few and far between. We're talking about real estate, and we don't, maybe every five or 10 years, we might have an opportunity to make a decision, and this is one of those times. And it's a huge positive decision if we should, if you should agree that this will actually transform a neighborhood. You've seen the pictures in the newspaper. And the other thing is, it was referred to previously, moderate-income housing has not been well-integrated in Nora Town. We have these archipelagos of lower-income housing, where these people work in our hospitals, they work in our schools, they are part of our community. And we're talking about not just a renovation, and improvement, and a transformation, we're talking about improving the quality of life, in terms of, right now, we have two-bedroom units where many more people are crammed into some of these units than should be, and this is a chance where maybe a grandparent can join a family. So I would say to you, reject this motion to defer. It's a tactic, so that the Housing Authority will lose its opportunity to gain these $30 million of funds from the state of Connecticut. We are in competition with other towns, and if we lose this window of opportunity, we will, it'll be gone for, we don't know how long. Let's not pass up this opportunity. Please reject this motion to refer. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have one question. With the questions that were raised by Ms. Fortunato, when do they get addressed if the municipal improvement remains? Because that's the issue that I'm confused about, is how does that get addressed in some responsible way? So that's a point of information before I make my comments. Where does that get reviewed?
We're discussing a motion to refer. If there are questions to be answered, presumably, this, if this is referred, that group will attempt to answer whatever questions you're referring.
Now, I'd like to go on and make comments. The chairman of the Finance Committee, who, I was very impressed with his comments about policy and unintended consequences. I think it's wonderful to address the renovation of Armstrong Court. The unintended consequences, which I'm concerned about, which hasn't been addressed, is, I see this cascading effect. For full disclosure, I've been involved in, as a town employee in Department of Social Services for 22 years. I'm very aware of what's happening in our housing units. What doesn't make sense to me is that we have the potential of every bedroom can have two children, two mother children, two males, two females. What is the impact, if you start doing the arithmetic, to push onto Hamilton Avenue School? Then would that necessitate a redistricting, then put pressure back on New Lebanon? And those questions are not being answered. It's not the issue of renovating Armstrong Court. It needs it. The fastest-growing group in the United States are healthy seniors, healthy 90-years-old. We really need to address that, and I see that as the crux of the P O C D, that that's really at the heart of, I think, what is being raised, but it's not being addressed in any reasonable way. So for us to make a good decision, where will that get, come up? And as Mr. Berg had pointed out, to have another committee to really answer very thoroughly these kinds of questions. The Housing Authority have been asked questions about the different layers and levels of who the people are, how does that relate to the P O C D, and they have not spoken on that. So, that's confusing to me, and I imagine it's confusing to you out there. We want to move forward. We want to have a nice neighborhood, a good neighborhood. We want to have it, make it look beautiful. It was built in the 1950s, after the Korean War, for veterans to do a transition, and then to move on into their homes, save up a deposit, and then move on. But it's been generational now, for many, many years. It may be another way of helping that complex by having seniors go in there, and having a mix of generations, instead of increasing the density of, you know, a range of population. It's nothing to do with race, it has to do with what the impact will be on that neighborhood, and more importantly, the schools. That's something that hasn't been addressed. Thank you.
Are you Mr. Bristol?
Yeah.
Chris Bristol?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Christopher Bristol. I'm the attorney, working with the Housing Authority through this process. Thanks for taking the time to come out. In terms of the question, questions posed by the previous speaker, I guess I just want to confirm, and I understand this was talked about before, but where we are in the zoning process is that we've received, obviously, the MI approval, which is a subject of our discussions today, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we've also received preliminary site plan special permit approvals from the Planning and Zoning Commission. What that is, is basically an advisory opinion as to where we are, and what we need to do in order to sort of satisfy these, the regulations and et cetera, that we have to comply with. In terms of the specific issues relating to schooling and everything else, I'd submit to you that those are properly before the Board of Education. I understand that those issues were discussed at length, and have been discussed at length. And I believe I saw writings that there was a recent plan that was submitted and perhaps approved by the, by the state as well, to help resolve some of those issues as well. But, as stated by the town attorney, I guess I just wanted to point out again, the P O C D and compliance of the P O C D is why we're here today, and it's the sole issue before you. And to those, a couple points to those, both the P O C D specifically references what we're proposing today, and that is to increase the diversity of housing options in the town of Greenwich, and that's town-wide, and that's not just in this isolated little group. Also, there is, as most of you probably know, that a few years ago, there was a Housing Authority, Housing Task Force made up as well.
Mr. Brown?
I think he's saying that he doesn't want this to be referred.
Yes, well, Mr. Moderator did ask, mentioned about answering questions, and then have someone from our group answer questions.
No, but we are, we are debating the motion to refer currently.
Thank you. Yes, I guess I just would have to echo the other, the other speakers' concerns, and say that we are in competition with other municipalities for this money. It's a very worthwhile project, as everyone, I think, has agreed so far, and I would argue against it's being referred. Thank you.
Anthony Johnson, Executive Director of the Housing Authority.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having me, and thanks for sticking around and listening to us in this debate. This is a great opportunity to talk to the town, and speak to people.
We're discussing the motion to refer.
Yes, I'm going to get there. So, really, let me start off by saying, the motion to defer, if you approve this motion, this project is dead, period. It's dead. It won't happen. We won't come back, because we're in competition for funding with the state of Connecticut and other communities. And those communities are ready to go forward with their projects. They're not, the money doesn't sit there, and it's sitting waiting for us to do that. We talk about the fact that we want to change, you know, the structure of the Housing Authority in terms of the number of bedrooms, who lives there, single families, elderly. That's what the Housing Authority does. We have a board that conducts that business. You, RTM, to my knowledge, approved the plan of conservation and development, once it had gone through study after study for over a year and a half, again, to my knowledge. I can't speak directly to it, but I know that we were involved in it, but it was improved by the RTM. So, there's a lot that we can talk about, but let me just say this. Who's going to write that check if we're going to talk about changing Armstrong Court? Because there is no one out there. This is taking a governor who has stepped forward, and came up with funding over the next 10 years for projects throughout the state of Connecticut. This is a competition. It's not a beauty pageant. The state is not going to wait around for us to decide to get our act together. If we don't get it together, it's not going to happen. Delay is exactly what it is. It kills this project. And let me just say this finally, to go forward. You have some really, really good professionals in this town. Land use, planning, wetlands, A R C. We went through all of these departments, each and every one of them. $450,000 has been spent on this project. So, what should happen now is we should throw that out of the window, start over, so we can explain to another committee what we're doing. I think you should consider that. I ask you to consider that. Ask you to be reasonable, to understand what you're asking for. Although the Town Charter gives you that responsibility and that right, you pay professionals to use their judgment to make decisions for you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Canilius, and I'm chairman of District Three, and I just wanted to say that on the racial imbalance issue, the racial imbalance issue has been going on for 10 to 15 years in Greenwich, and as long as the Board of Ed comes up with a plan each year to try and fix it, there won't be any kind of redistricting or anything, or busing our students out. So even if 80 minority students happened to come into Armstrong Court and live there, it would not make our district have redistricting and move our kids out of the neighborhood. District Three is completely behind this Housing Authority to renovate Armstrong Court. We also have major concerns about down on Booth Place, where the soils are toxic, and we would want that cleaned up and tested immediately. But as far as Armstrong Court goes, please vote for our Armstrong Court to be renovated. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dedakis, District One.
Mr. Moderator, I move the previous question.
All right, the motion for the previous question has been moved and seconded. It is a motion to cut off debate. It is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. If you are in favor of cutting off debate at this point, and proceeding to vote on the pending motion to refer, you should vote in favor of Mr. Dedakis's motion for the previous question. If you are opposed, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Berg, motion to refer item 17 to special committee.
Can we have a voice vote?
No, no, we're going to take a record vote on this. And we will need to await the resolution of this vote before we can proceed further. So I ask the district chairs to please conduct the voting quickly, quietly, but this would be a time, if you have voted, to get up and stretch. So at this, at this point, please take the vote on the motion to refer. All right, first, there have been some complaints about smoking outside the doors here. I've been asked to remind all, all our members that there is no smoking anywhere on the school grounds, not just inside, but outside as well. And I thank our custodial staff for assisting in resolving that problem. All right, I have the result of the vote on the Berg motion to refer item 17. Those in favor, 47. Opposed, 120. Abstaining, 4. Hang on a minute. All right, so item 17 is still before us. Further discussion on item... All right, are we ready to vote on item 17? Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, item 17, substitute resolution, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right. Oh, hold on, yes, thank you very much. All right, excuse me, may I have everyone's attention? This substitute resolution is phrased in such a way, so that if you want to approve the Housing Authority's municipal improvement application, you should vote no on this substitute resolution. And our law department has said, a no vote on this resolution, if there was a majority no vote, that would constitute an approval of the municipal improvement, correct, Mr. Wetmore? Okay, so, if you want to reject the Housing Authority's municipal improvement application, you should vote yes on item 17. If you want to approve the Housing Authority municipal improvement application, you should vote no on this, on this vote. Is that clear? All right, I ask the district chairs now to please conduct the voting. And I remind our members, there is one more item that is on our agenda, so let's just make sure we don't leave thinking, you know, it may not, may not be any action on it, but I ask that everyone just await the conclusion of all of our business tonight. All right, I don't believe I announced the vote on item 15, which was that RTM rule regarding the Harbor Management Commission. All right, the vote on item 15, as amended. Those in favor, 186. Opposed, 1 abstaining 0. So, item 15 as amended has carried. All right, we have the result of the vote on item 17. Once again, a yes vote was to reject the MI application, and no vote was to approve it. Those in favor, 31. Opposed, 126. Abstaining, 12. The MI application has been approved. All right. That brings us to the final item on our call tonight, item 18. Jason Auerbach of District Eight.
Before presenting the item, I would like to take a moment to thank everyone for all their assistance. Specifically, I'd like to single out First Selectman Tessie for his support. We look forward to the Board of Selectmen bringing this issue back to the RTM this fall. So Peter, we leave it in your, in your hands. Resolve the Chapter Two, Article One of the Municipal Code of the Town entitled "Chapter Two Administration, Article One," reserved be amended by adding Article One, Section 2-1 as follows, as is read in the call.
All right, and I'll ask our town attorney if he has an opinion as to this, the legal order of item 18. All right, the town attorney has given his opinion that item 18 is not in legal order. As a result, the chair does not accept this resolution. There being no further business to come before the meeting, this meeting now stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.